Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:30. I'd like to call the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for February 3rd, 2015, to order. Let me designate Nelson to stand in and vote for our vacant position. Remind everyone to sign in and make sure the microphones are turned on and speak clearly into them. Let me announce that our next planning board meeting will be February 17th at 7:30 PM in this room. The next bike, pedestrian, and subcommittee meeting will be February 10th at 7:30 PM, also in this room. With that, it brings us to the Planning and Zoning Administrators Report. Donna, do you have anything for us tonight?
Just tonight, I only have the regional impact assessments. And as the board will see in their memo for both projects, the Townsend Oil and Propane, as well as the Auto Fair Realty, staffs recommending that the board determine that both projects are not of regional impact, as they do not meet the criteria discussed by the board on December 2nd, 2014.
What's the will of the board with respect to the regional impact assessment?
So moved that they're not regional impacts.
Is there a second for that? Second by Mr. Disco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? There are five of us tonight, 5-0-0, to approve the recommendations for the regional impact recommendations of the department. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Are there any questions by members of the board for the staff? Seeing none, that brings us to item three on our agenda, which is JBD Realty LLC. And this is a review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a site plan for an interim change of use as a contractor's yard for vehicle, equipment, and plant material storage. The parcel is located at 35 Railroad Avenue in the I-1 industrial and off for conservation districts. Portions of the parcel are also subject to the flood hazard conservation district, Tax Map 5D-1, Lot 7. Donna, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
No, just the board will remember that this was previously before you, a year or two ago, for warehouse use. That warehouse was never constructed, and as an interim use, they're now before you for the change of use to have a landscaping business.
Thank you, Donna. Good to see you, Steve. Please take a minute to sign in and then introduce yourself. Tell us where we're at with this. Is your microphone on, Steve?
Right. Here's Jeff Dupont, my client and the owner of the property. When we came before this board in the beginning of 2013, and gained site plan approval for Jeff to construct a 20,000-square-foot industrial building, he moved forward after that approval and acquired the property. Jeff's full-time business is not real estate development. He owns a company here in Merrimack, Elite Installations, and does a fit up of office space and so forth. I could probably say a bit more about that than I could, but he's so busy, he's on his way to Burlington, Vermont, to work on a Fairpoint project as soon as we conclude here in a few minutes.
I hope he's gonna get paid.
They pay the best.
the site plan that was approved in the beginning of 2013, if you recall, occupied a good portion of the premises with the entrance to the building facing south, driveway in off railroad Ave, called for the demolition of the existing building and all the other site improvements that are there, that are situated here. Remnants of business that was operated there many years ago, an auto body business, and then later, a national school bus, when they occupied and owned the property for a number of years. Moving forward from his approval in 2013 to the present day, Jeff's business would occupy about 10,000 square feet of the 20 he proposes to ultimately build. He sought a tenant for the remaining 10,000 feet. And not being able to locate one that, at least within the price range, that made it for a lease rate and terms that made it appropriate for him to take the risk to put up the building, he's held off on building the building. As I said, he did acquire the property. And he had an opportunity back last year to put a tenant in there, landscape tenant, and he did so. And learned in November, when he received a letter from Community Development, that he needed to come and get approval for a change of use site plan. So that little reminder is why he called me and why Katie put the site plan together and why I'm here tonight with Jeff. Basically, we call this an interim site plan because we do hope, or Jeff hopes to build that building sooner than later, as soon as economic conditions warrant, and he has a tenant for the remaining 10,000 feet that he won't occupy himself. If you've been by the site, basically, the landscape contractor who has leased it uses the building for storage of equipment and product that he uses in his business. It is a fairly large landscape contractor who is headquartered in Laconia?
Meredith, New Hampshire.
And they do a lot of business here in the southern part of the state, so they wanted to have a locale here. This is not a landscape contractor that cuts your grass and does that type of stuff. It's a person that, a firm that does larger installations. This past summer, they were doing a market basket. It gives you any new plaza, it gives you any sort of an indication of their size. The exterior of the building, they do store equipment. And they dispatch that, those trucks, from that site each day. Their employees arrive, park their personal vehicles on site, and go to their jobs and come back. There, as shown on the site plan, there's some areas based on direction of staff, we've identified where, and working with Jeff's tenant, where they'll store equipment when it's not being used, here, here, and here. And then we're showing some circles representative of areas where they may place piles of mulch and other products, plant materials. I'm told that it's unusual for them to store a lot of plant materials. Most of the materials come directly from the nursery to their job sites, because they do buy in bulk, and most of their projects are of a larger variety. Apparently, this summer, they had materials on one of their jobs, because there was a delay in the job, and they put them here, put mulch around them, and irrigated them so that they didn't die. But I guess that is an unusual circumstance, or at least we've been told. So what we're here for tonight is seeking approval for a site plan for the interim use of the site until such time as Jeff is able to proceed with the construction of the larger building that you folks approved back in 2013. Donna has given you a pretty well-done staff report. She has within it certain recommended conditions of approval, none of which we have taken exception to. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll conclude, and Jeff and I will attempt to answer any questions you have.
Have you been to see the Conservation Commission yet?
Yes, Katie went last week, and I believe, when you turn to page two of your staff report, in under recommendation, when you look at recommended condition five, I think that captures their input, Mr. Chairman.
If you've been to see him, that means I got an email, so let me check for a second, and I'll find it.
While you're doing it, Mr. Chairman, maybe I could ask the similar question regarding the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee. Have you been to them?
I don't believe so. I wouldn't customarily attempt to do that for a change of use, where we're not building anything or breaking any ground.
Well...
I have, I found the email, which I received on January 28th. It says that she'd went to see him Monday evening of that week. There's three recommendations. The commission appreciates the applicant's non-use of salt or de-icing compounds on the property, and would like that to be a conditioned approval of planning board. So you've committed to the Conservation Commission that you're not going to use any salt or de-icing?
That's correct.
Will you store any salt or de-icing, sanding? Do you do any sanding or...?
They use sand, straight sand.
For...
All their salt and sand.
Landscaping purposes or for plowing snow?
For winter use. They keep sand and salt in all their locations. They take care of it. Nothing is stored in the yard, and they know that.
Okay, so where's the sand and salt stored here?
It's not. It's stored like at Home Depot. If they have an account at Home Depot, they have a place at Home Depot where they put it.
I got you. Okay, I understand.
And they use sand for traction on their own site?
Yes.
Although you're not paid here, so you probably got plenty.
A portion of it is paid.
The commission understands the plans do not show any landscaping changes, but for education recommends that only low phosphates, low-release nitrogen fertilizers be used. The commission further recommends that the applicant first utilize a soil testing facility to determine what they need. So they're making recommendations about fertilizer, but you've indicated to them that you don't plan to make any landscape changes.
Not at this point now, until we implement in his full site plan and put the landscaping that was part of that approval into place.
When you do the plant storage on site, do you use fertilizer with any of those plant material while it's there?
No, they don't use whatever the plants come from with the nurseries, what they...
And they're talking with Jonas, the guy who runs the operation there. All the materials that they had stored this year that were balled and burlapped, and they leave the balled and burlapped on, and then they put mulch, and they wet the mulch around them to keep them alive until they transport them to the job site, so they're not planted there.
Okay, so the areas on the plan that say plant material, those are live plants that are waiting to be planted somewhere? That's not plant material, like organic material for mowing, or composts, or anything like that?
Be bark mulch.
Okay. Is there any storage of compost, or anything that you're bringing from someone else's site back on here? Do you guys do mowing?
They don't mow.
Okay.
They mow, I think they mow a little bit. They do landscape, some landscaping, but again, they do just the big complexes like Steve mentioned.
But as far as you've got on this plan, there's no area that's designated for bringing any of that organic material back?
Most of the equipment that they store here are small dump trucks, trailer equipment, the equipment's inside, and then they put it on the trailer, you know, a landscape trailer, or their panel trucks. They do have an irrigation component to their, so obviously, they have tradesman vans, and that's what they dispatch from here, is that type of thing.
Okay. And then the third recommendation for the Conservation Commission is that the commission recommends that if fertilizers are to be stored on the property, that they remain in their original containers and not be stored outside. Is that something you're aware of as their recommendation?
The company doesn't do any kind of fertilizers. They don't have a license to fertilize, so they don't do any fertilizing.
Okay, so they don't have any, they wouldn't store any, and you're reasoning to have it or store it. Okay. Are there any other comments or questions by others?
Well, I would like to ask, the first question would be, you were doing this for about a year before anybody tripped over you. If you hadn't been tripped over by a member of this board, would you even be bothered to be here?
No.
Well, I think that's a pretty poor recent remark.
Well, it's the truth. I don't think my client, this is the first piece of commercial real estate you bought?
Yes.
I don't think he was aware of the necessity to do that for a change of use. Obviously, he was aware that when he contemplated building the 20,000-square-foot building, that he needed to get permits. And dealing with the contractor, who just happens to be here for another reason tonight, found his way to us, we engineered the site plan, we got him a permit, and he went on from there. But, you know, when you're a person who runs a completely different business, I don't think it's reasonable or customary to expect somebody to admit, to know that there's a change of use necessity. And I think it's arguable whether this does constitute a change of use sufficient to generate site plan approval. When we got the letter, I spoke with Donna, we exchanged some thoughts on the thing, and Jeff immediately authorized us to tender the application. It was less than two weeks I was there after he found out that, he received the letter, that, you know, he didn't push back at all. We're here.
On your site, as you've got it laid out today, and it's in use today, is there any part of the terrain that's been altered? Is there any excavation, any digging, leveling, changing of the way the...?
The whole site was regraded. Nelson, help me. Who was the family that had the auto body site there for a long time, before the truck? There was a family from here in town. The name would be, show up on one of the reference plans. There was some site work done when they built that there, and then when...
Duxbury?
Yes, yes. Harland Duxbury. And at one point in time, based on some old reference plans that I saw, that Chip Keller had done many moons ago, the building that you see there today arrived there, and there was actually a mobile home on the site at one point in time that somebody lived in behind that. A number of years later, there was a second site plan submitted under the name of Duxbury that made a yard area, and I presume that was, I know they were in the towing business as well as the auto body business. I'm sure it was to prepare for that, although I don't know that to be true necessarily. That was in the late 70s, early 80s, I believe. I understand that in, when National School Bus, or whatever their name was, acquired the property, that they leveled the rest of it and prepared it as a level pad, because I happen to know the guy that took the material out of there, right, Mr. Cota? And is with us tonight, who owns property on two sides of it. But I think that was the last significant earthwork that occurred. And I think that was a dozen, 15 years or more ago.
I remember a discussion when you're here for approval of your warehouse about concerns with respect to the way stormwater runs off of the parcel or affects its neighboring parcels. And I think that when we approved the warehouse, we actually had some discussion about what you were going to do to manage that going forward.
That's correct, and that was more of a function of the fact that with going to... Here's the existing building roof area, and as we know, there is some paved apron space around the perimeter of it. But when you compare the roof area, footprint area of that building with all of the pavement that goes, comes with it, there'd be a significant increase in impervious surface with implementation of the full site plan in the future. As a result of that, we engineered a detention area in here, and made some other accommodations for stormwater treatment and attenuation on the southerly side of the property. That was more of a function of what will come next, as opposed to what's there now. The site, as it exists today, much like the rest of that area, is fairly well-drained. There's a seam that runs through Mr. Cota's property and part of Depot, where we go from an area that's underlaid by ledge till we get towards the tracks and closer to the river, where it's more outwash material and sand. This site, I don't want to testify here tonight that you never see a puddle of water in the yard, because you probably do, but I think it's pretty well-drained, if I'm not mistaken.
Does the use as a contractor's yard, as opposed to it being in its previous state, waiting for the warehouse project, does that have any impact on the water runoff, or as an engineer, do you believe it does?
No, it's basically the same surface.
How do we, as a board, come to that conclusion, other than you said so?
Well, you see the existing condition survey that was prepared in 2013 on the drawing, and other than some vehicles being parked there that wouldn't have been there at the time, which we wouldn't have located anyways, in the summer, you would have found those plant materials that have come and gone. Other than that, it's the exact same conditions. I mean, we did field check it in in December, when we...
Test pits.
And then we did the test pits back in the day, yeah. But more recently, before we submitted the plan, we did field check it to see if there was any significant changes in the existing conditions, and we found none that were noteworthy anyways.
What's the situation with snow storage on the site now, today?
I'm not sure.
They just push everything towards the fence.
Everything being...?
All the snow, that they, all the area they need, they've been pushing it towards the fence.
How much of the area gets plowed?
Just around the building. I drove by there today, and there was just a small path plowed around the building, in employee areas.
The area that says proposed vehicle and equipment storage, proposed plant storage, four circles of that, mulch location, all that stuff is not plowed in the wintertime?
Typically, I was talking to Jay Graham, who's the actual operations manager here in town. He says that all the employees take all the company vehicles home, for 90% of them in the wintertime, because it's quicker to get from their house to the location than going back to the shop.
I appreciate that. I'm just trying to figure out if you're piling up the snow in some way that's going to create runoff on your property.
Mr. Chabid, if I can help you, being intimately associated with that site for a number of years, I have to say, much as it hurts me to say it, in the circumstances, because I have very strong views about what's happened, what they're doing now is actually less injurious to the rest of the world than what used to be there when the bus companies were there. They don't have as many vehicles. They haven't got, they don't make such big piles of snow as the bus company used to do. There's generally less of a problem than there used to be. And certainly during the course of the winter, where, the earlier part of the winter, before we got this little lot, it didn't seem to be any problem, and certainly their snow piles were a lot smaller than those that we used to create on the site. I mean, I know that speaking is a sort of non-technical, but as an engineer, I'm not qualified to state that as an engineer. My engineering, but it's from observation and knowledge.
That's a...
They're less of a problem.
That's said, I am qualified to say it, and I echo his remarks.
Okay. It doesn't alter my views about the situation.
I didn't suspect it would, Alistair. I know you too long.
Understood. Before we get much further, we ought to address whether the application's complete and we accept it for jurisdiction.
I make a motion, we review the, the application is complete, Mr. Chairman, and we review it for acceptance.
Is there a second for that? Second by Ms. Fault. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to deem the application complete and accept it for review. You don't have any waiver requests? Except for waiving full site plan review?
That would be correct, yes.
What's the will of the board with respect to waiving full site plan review?
I make a motion that we waive requirement for full site plan review, Mr. Chairman, especially in the light of the fact that when they came before us in 2013, they did a very comprehensive support, project report on the site and the drainage and everything else. I don't think we should require anything more at this time.
Now, the staff's memo doesn't talk about waiving full site plan review, because they're calling it an interim change in use. But I don't mind taking the motion in a second.
Well, I'll take a...
Oh, okay. I got you. I was looking up here at the top.
What did he say? I didn't hear what Mr....
It is mentioned in the staff memo. I just overlooked that part.
And it says...
That they recommend that the board accept it and waive full site plan review.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Is there a second for Alistair's motion?
I'll second Alistair's motion, but I'd like, I follow up with a question once we get through this. Okay.
After the motion, after we vote?
After the mo...
Okay. Any discussion on the motion to waive full site plan review? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0, waive full site plan review. Nelson, question?
My question is, how are we handling this as a, as an overlay to a previously approved? We've got an approved subdivision, or not subdivision, excuse me, approved site plan, which I presume you have signed, Mr. Chairman, and is finally approved.
It is signed, yes it is.
It is signed. So that's in place. Now, this new plan is kind of an overlay to the previous plan, and it's taking precedence over the approved plan that's there. I just wonder how we handled that, or how the staff handles that administratively and legally.
Yeah, I do get what you're saying. Usually, approving another site plan essentially revokes the prior approval that hasn't been executed, but you don't want that to happen in this case.
No, and when, we agreed to come in and talking with staff, it was my understanding that in doing so, we were given assurances by the Community Development Director that this is basically allows for the continued occupancy until such time as, if I'm not mistaken, Donna.
Right, and then if there were drastic changes, planning board approval may be necessary, but we're thinking more at this time, that would just be administrative approval.
When did we approve that?
Go back to the warehouse. The final approval was...
Something on that order, yes.
January, February 2013, they approved the warehouse construction.
And you've met all your conditions of approval, and so your approval is, it doesn't require you to do any substantial construction, it's not a subdivision. So it's vested.
Well, I'm not sure it is under 674-39, because he's done no active and substantial building and development to implement it. So I think he would be subject to any changes in...
I think he's right. Yeah.
Anything that goes, if we change the rules between then and now, he's got to come back.
Yes.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
You know, and, but I guess that's just the luck of the draw, right?
Yeah, it's a risk you're willing to take.
I think it's a risk that he's compelled to take.
Yeah, yeah.
Life is forcing it upon you. Let's try a public hearing, in case people have more questions for the applicant.
So you will sign this plan, you know, subsequent to, if we approve it tonight?
Yeah, I think we got to discuss whether it requires some note or some qualification in the memo, or something that identifies, I mean, it is identified as an interim, but I don't know that we've necessarily got that.
I think that was my word and not Tim's or Donna's. I foresaw this discussion.
Any other comments or questions for the applicant before we hear from the public?
One other question had to do with the Lower Merrimack River. Steve made some comments, but I'm not sure what staff's position on that is with regard to review by the Lower Merrimack River, the Local Advisory Committee. I know they've become quite active. They're quite interested in reviewing plans within their jurisdiction and giving advice to the planning board. And it sounds like that didn't happen here.
Right. We can certainly add it as a condition if that's what the board chooses.
Okay, I would wish that, so maybe when we get to the motion, then we'll do that. Okay. I wouldn't expect them to have any objections to this, but as a matter of policy and procedure, since they're within the jurisdiction, we should...
And goodwill, and save me from getting some more emails from the chairman.
I understand the nexus.
Are there any citizens, abutters, or members of the community who wish to weigh in and offer the board any input on this application? Yeah, please do sign in, and if you'd like to sit at the table, we can arrange for that if the microphone's okay.
No.
That's fine.
Use the mic, or I'll sign in.
It's on.
Yes, it is.
Dave Cota, I own 29 and 31 Railroad Ave. And I was here at the other hearing on his building, new building, which I was all for. I'm all for this, as long as he keeps the grounds halfway clean, because his backyard is my front yard. And that's the only request I have, you know, free of junk trucks and wrecked trucks. But I realize it's still an industrial. So I have to say, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Cota. Any other abutters or citizens wish to weigh in? Close the public hearing. I think, I don't mind having a limitation that says non-functioning vehicles or repairs on site, or any of that stuff doesn't belong with the site.
They don't do that anyways.
Yeah, I think I saw in some of the information that there's no repairs on site. And then the only other thing is whether there's no non-functioning or unregistered vehicles on the site.
Well, some of their equipment wouldn't be registered.
Right, if it's not capable of being registration.
Like a bobcat or something, right? Because they go in the back of a trailer to the site, so they haven't got a plate on.
Right, but for those that can be registered, they are. Any other comments or questions by members of the board? What's the will of the board with respect to final action on the application?
You'd like a motion?
Nelson, sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve this plan with the conditions that somehow we resolve, I don't know quite how to word this now, how we're going to make sure that it's a temporary plan and that it does not negate or undo the previously approved plan, which I don't know how to, I don't know a good way to say all of that.
I don't know how you can do it. The word temporary covers...
It's a temporary, yes, but maybe that's the only way.
Why don't we ask the staff to come up with some wording that embodies that idea as one of the conditions for approval?
Well, that's, that's a good one. I like that. Okay, and the other thing I would ask in my motion is that the applicant... Okay, and the other thing I would ask in my motion is that the, uh, that the, uh, that the applicant agree to any conditions or, or issues raised by the Lower Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee.
I'll look to your first point, Nelson.
Yeah.
Take a look at note one on the drawing. I, I vote that kind of, this thought, the purpose of this plan is to show the existing conditions of the subject site, as well as proposed interim use of the same by a landscape contractor.
Yeah, microphone, please, and what note are you reading, please?
Note one, general note.
Note one.
Yeah.
Well, okay, Jim.
The purpose of this plan is to show the existing conditions of the subject site, as well as the proposed interim use of the same by a landscaping contractor until such time as reference plan number seven is implemented. Uh, reference plan number seven is cited above together with the recording number from the registry.
I think it is pretty good language.
Yeah, it's pretty good. It's open-ended, but
Of course it is, I wrote it.
Sure.
The only thing that I would add, and doesn't necessarily have to be a note on the plan, but for perhaps the staff's approval, is that, that, that situation described in note one doesn't in any way extend the timeframe you have to implement that earlier approval.
I think that's statutory, is it not?
I think it is, except that if we were to vote in some way, something we said or did tonight acted as a new approval of it, then your clock would start tonight rather than two years ago. Or it could, I mean, arguably.
I understand. That's okay.
We've talked enough to say that it wouldn't be, but, um, Donna, are you clear on all of that? Is there a second for Nelson's motion?
A second.
Second by Ms. Fault. Nelson, you looking at questions or comments?
No, I just wondered how it was being captured. I guess Donna captured it and, uh,
Zioners capturing it front and tail.
And Zenas.
Okay, all right. I'm satisfied with their capabilities in these areas.
Okay. Um, any other comments or questions before we vote?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the only thing, as you've heard my views, and I, deep down, I have to say I accept this going forward, but I think this is a very bad way of doing things. I feel that the applicant was slightly negligent, if, and that's the polite word, what happened. And if it wasn't for the fact that this member of the board didn't actually catch him at it, this wouldn't be going forward. And I personally don't like this way of, if you like, somebody can get away with murder, but got caught out, so he now puts it right. I feel very aggrieved about it, but I still will have to support the motion.
Um, I, I don't disagree with the sentiment, and we have had it a few times before this board where someone comes before us, uh, not in compliance with something they've promised to do, and looking to get right. And I think we've had a similar discussion between them, and the balance for me between the sentiment that you have and creating an environment where people can come forward without fear to get right, I think I choose to sort of make it amenable for people to come forward, fix whatever's going on, and get on the right side of the road.
That's why I am voting for it, Mr. Chairman, but I, I feel we should, it should become public knowledge. It's not the way to do things.
No, I agree. I don't think the applicant would do it this way again.
I don't think it was done deliberately, and I don't think the other cases are done deliberately, that we've had in the past, so. These things
I wouldn't agree with that, Nelson.
Anyway, that might be a stretch, but
That's one hell of a stretch, that is.
In this case, I can, I can assure you it was done without lack of appreciation of the fact that, um, that Jeff needed
So he's wearing sackcloth and ashes and will go forward?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Well, that means, but all in favor of the motion in the second, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero. Thank you for coming in and going through the effort of explaining this all to us.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, ladies.
Appreciate it. Yes.
I like that better, actually.
Drive carefully.
Yes, be careful out in the snow. Item number four on the agenda is Boomer McLeod's car audio, as the applicant and GFI Merrimack LLC as the owner, review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of an application for a site plan to construct a seven thousand five hundred square foot, two-story car audio electronics retail sales and service building. The parcel's located at five Executive Park Drive in the C-two commercial and Aqua for Conservation District's Tax Map four D Lot seventy-three. Donna, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
No, I'll let the applicant do the talking.
Thank you for that. We'll give him a minute to get settled and signed in. Yeah, you will be actually better for the camera's purposes if you put the plans over in that corner rather than that one. I'm sorry to let you go through all the trouble of setting that up and not sorting that out. Yeah. Should've corrected him, too.
That's a bad move.
Yeah, the camera that can see plans is this one, so it's that way. If you've signed in, don't forget to introduce yourself and then tell us what's going on. And before you do, I have to say, I love the name of that business. You couldn't name a car stereo business any better than that.
That's right. For the record, it's McLoud, not McCloud.
McCloud?
McLoud.
Oh, it's McCloud.
McCloud, yeah.
Yes. No, they, they sell other things besides car stereos, but, you know, they do
Some loud Irish ones.
Auto starters and security systems and whatnot.
Yeah, the one that I read before has two Cs in the McCloud, McLoud, rather than one. That's why I read it that way. The memo has one. Two Cs there.
Anyway, good evening. Uh, my name is Earl Blatchford. I'm with Hayner Swanson. Uh, we're located at Three Congress Street, representing the applicant. Also with me is, uh, Peter Flynn from Flynn Construction, who is the, uh, construction manager and general contractor, uh, for the owner. The, um, the site, uh, is just briefly on the existing site. Uh, it's a one-point-six-five acre site, is Zone C-two, uh, General Commercial. Uh, it's also in the Aqua for Protection District. Located on the, uh, easterly side of, um, Executive Park Drive. Uh, and it's bounded on the west side by Executive Park Drive, uh, and the hotel site, uh, on the, uh, east side by the Effie Everett Turnpike, and to the north by a, uh, office building site. The, uh, lots predominantly wooded, um, and it has, the, the southerly, two-thirds of the site is kind of a high, uh, plateau area, and then there's kind of a steep slope down to a ravine area where a section of Natticoop Brook flows through the property, uh, discharges from a seventy-two inch culvert, uh, under Executive Park Drive, runs along the northerly boundary, and then goes into a culvert under the turnpike, uh, continues toward the supply ponds. So there is, um, there is a narrow band of associated wetlands and also flood plain, uh, associated with that section of the brook, of which we are not disturbing, uh, any of that. We're staying, uh, completely out of that. The, just kind of by way of history, uh, this subdivision was done in the late seventies. Executive Park Drive and the hotel were built in seventy-eight, seventy-nine. Um, and then the two office buildings up at the end, on the right, were built in nineteen eighty, uh, nineteen eighty-one. And then there's a long period of inactivity. Uh, and then in two thousand three, two thousand four, uh, the Cinemagic Theater was built. And I think our office has pretty much had hand in this whole thing over the years, our Hayner Swanson, and before that, Alan H. Swanson. So, uh, it's had a long history. Uh, there's one undeveloped lot up on the left side, and another partially developed, uh, slot, which has the, um, a part of the theater parking in it, the overflow parking. And then this is the only other lot. So it's kind of a orphan lot that's, uh, been waiting for almost forty years for someone to come along and, uh, show it some love. And, uh, uh, it's a small site, so it's kind of, it's, it's not the easy site. There's definitely been people that have looked at it over the years. But, um, uh, anyway, it's definitely has good visibility from the turnpike, uh, and good access. So, um, we're glad to see something going forward with it. So I think that, that is basically, uh, kind of the existing condition. Uh, as far as the proposal goes, um, it's a two-story, seventy-five hundred square foot building, and ideally, this would be a one-story building, but because of the topography at the back of the site, we, the building was reconfigured, uh, to do it in two levels to help us. We couldn't cite a single building of the same square footage. So the, uh, upper level, uh, which is accessed, uh, from the southerly drive, uh, has the, um, retail area, office, uh, part storage, and one service bay, um, closest to the road. Uh, on the lower level, on the north side of the building, which is accessed from the northerly drive, there are four more service bays, um, and it's, there's a twelve-foot elevation difference. The lower level's twelve feet lower, uh, I'm sorry, fourteen feet lower than the first floor. So, um, and there, on the upper level, we've got, uh, eighteen, uh, surface parking spaces, including two, uh, handicap accessible, and on the lower level, we have seven more, um, parking spaces, which will be primarily for employee parking. And there's also basically, uh, if you'll notice in the, um, uh, plan notes, we've accounted for, uh, parking within the building, uh, as well, within the service bays, uh, because they will store cars in there, so. Uh, we discussed that with staff, and they said that's, uh, that's perfectly acceptable. Uh, the building itself is gonna be, uh, it'll be fully sprinkled. Um, we've discussed the layout with the fire department, um, and they've signed off on it. The, um, all the utilities, water, uh, sanitary sewer, gas, underground electric, uh, telephone, cable TV, are all available, uh, in the street at the frontage, uh, and we've shown all that utility service information on the plans. The, um, Merrimack Village District has, uh, given us an availability letter. And we also have, uh, the, uh, NHDES sewer connection permit. We've received that. Uh, and it is a gravity sewer service, which comes out of the back of the building and runs down the driveway and ties into a manhole out in the street, so. Uh, as far as the stormwater goes, we have, um, uh, catch basins, which are fitted with, uh, gas straps inside the structures, uh, and those are piped to a, uh, underground, um, detention and infiltration system, which we've designed, uh, to accommodate the twenty-five-year storm, and we've checked it for the fifty-year storm. It basically, a- all storms up through the fifty-year, which we analyzed, all the stormwater stays within the system and percolates into the ground. There is a very slight increase when you, between the pre and the post, on the order of a couple of one-hundredths of a CFS, between the pre and the post, um, which we have stated in the report is negligible, uh, as far as any downstream impacts. So we feel we've put in, um, a, a very effective stormwater management system that not only takes care of, uh, the increased runoff, but it also treats it, uh, quite effectively. Uh, the site doesn't require an alteration of train permit, but we've designed it with those same, um, uh, using the best management, um, practices that the state would look for, so. The proposed site lighting, um, is, um, full cutoff LED lighting, um, which meets the town's requirements, um, goes actually beyond, uh, it'll be a good, uh, energy efficient, um, system going forward. The, uh, we've, uh, prepared a landscape design, which is included in the site plan package. Um, there are several tree plantings proposed, uh, along with some shrubs. And, um, the building elevations, which New England-style, uh, building, with a gable roof, uh, this is the front elevation.
Oh, yeah, just, you take that one with you. You take it out of the
Sorry, so this is the front elevation. Uh, this is the overhead door for the one service, uh, bay at the upper level, uh, front door. So this is really the customer entrance area. This is the right side or the, um, east side of the building. Metal, um, metal panel roof, um, charcoal gray, uh, vinyl siding, uh, which will be white. Uh, trim boards are going to be a lighter gray. And this, these are the other elevations. This is the right side elevation, transitioning down the slope, uh, upper mandor and a lower mandor. And then these are the four lower service bays, so. That's, um...
Do you have a walkway stair ramp or something for a pedestrian to be able to get from the upper parking lot to the lower parking lot if they need to?
Uh, that would happen inside the building. There is a staircase inside the building. Uh, but as far as exterior, no, we don't. Uh, we didn't feel there was a need to do it. So if they do need to go down for whatever reason, the employees will go up and down within the, uh, interior, uh, staircase. So if a customer had a need to go down to the lower level, um, they could do the same thing.
As long as they can manage stairs. I didn't mean to interrupt you. Please continue.
Yeah, just, just a couple more things. We, um, because it's in the, uh, Aqua for Protection District, we did go to the Conservation Commission in September. They gave us a, a favorable recommendation, uh, and they had one, um, condition that they asked for, which we have incorporated into the plan, which was the, um, no phosphorus slow-release fertilizer. And we've adjusted that on our, um, landscape plan specifications. Uh, and we have, um, one waiver request, um, which is for sidewalk. Um, and we have a letter. I'll be happy to go over that with, uh, the board.
Hold off on going over the letter till we, um, determine whether it's complete and, and move on to that subject.
Okay.
Um, is, is your building elevation gonna have any signs on the building itself, and if so, where and how large?
At this time, um, the, the owner has, um, is going to have, work with Barlow sign, uh, on signage. Uh, at this point, the owner's thinking is he, he's not gonna have building signage, and we show, um, a location for future ground sign. The, the, the honest truth is, the, the owner's been just too busy with his, running his business, and just hasn't really kind of got down to that level of thought. He's just trying to kind of push the big pieces ahead. Uh, and he's planning on working with Barlow over the next couple of months, um, to figure out what he needs, um, for, um, for signage to identify. As I understand the way the business works, most of his business is done online by appointment. So it's not a, it's not really, uh, dependent on signage pulling people to the site. It's basically a destination. They, um, so, but, uh, the, the, long, not to be evasive, but the long short of it is he just hasn't figured out what he needs or wants for signage.
No, I wasn't suggesting you're gonna be evasive or anything like that, and I know that the town went, deal with signs separately in terms of ground signs near the entrance and all of that. My curiosity is whether there's some signage that would go on the building that would make an effort to make it visible from the interstate, which is, I think, when you were talking about the site in the beginning, you mentioned that it has great visibility from the, the turnpike.
Yeah, and I think, well, the orientation of the building doesn't, um, the way the gable runs, doesn't lend itself to Yeah, and I think, well, the orientation of the building doesn't, the way the gable runs, doesn't lend itself to that because this, this is basically the side that's gonna be facing the highway.
You have your microphone?
The other side.
Make sure you use the microphone when you speak, yeah, that's the, the top one is the side that faces the highway.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry.
But as you travel north or south, you're gonna see the big end of the building.
Yeah.
There's trees in the way.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, you know, probably this would be, you know, possibly the gable ends, but it's kind of, you'd see, you know, one from one direction and one from the other, so. I, I don't, I don't really know how important it's gonna be, and I think that's what they're trying to figure out. So, I mean, it's, so, a- a, you know, we'll, whatever is required going forward, once he decides what, if any signage is needed, and I assume there's gonna be some, we'll follow whatever, you know, procedures will be necessary. And I assume that, you know, if it has to come back in, Barlow signs will handle that. It'll strictly be for the signage, so.
Okay.
But.
Well, experience with Barlow signs is they'll be, before the zoning board adjustment, looking for something bigger than we, we like to see, but that's, that's Barlow's business, if you will.
Yeah.
Talk a little bit about screening from the turnpike, 'cause that was one of my questions, and maybe that'll help answer this.
Yes.
You know, there's some landscaping, you know, what are you doing on your property for landscaping and what exists there on the turnpike property for, as far as screening is concerned, 'cause there are some, it's hard to tell from today. What's yours and what's theirs.
Well, this is, this is the, the right-of-way line is actually right here.
Yeah.
And then, similar to, pretty much along the whole property, the, the state actually owns a strip of land that runs along here. So, there is some trees on there. And so, we're, we're basically, because of grading, we've got a slope here, we're, we're cutting pretty much to the property line, because we have to, there's a kind of a high ridge here and just to make all the, the, the earthwork necessary to sight everything. So, we're not, I mean, it's not our intention to screen the site from the turnpike.
It looks like the natural configuration of the land is gonna do that pretty well, if you look at this one, there's a good amount of.
Until the day comes that they widen the turnpike, which is in the long-range plans here to add another lane to the turnpike, and that will eat up their side of it.
Yeah.
And you have no plans, I see, to do any screening on your side, even though there's some green there.
Right, that's basically replanting the slope that's, you know, the area that's being disturbed.
Of what, by what, is by grass?
Yes.
Yeah, grass doesn't provide much screening.
But I, I guess why, who are you concerned about screening though?
Well, the turnpike used to be interested in the old days, I don't think there's so much interest in it anymore as they were at one time, but.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I know that the theater actually requested, when they cut trees to do their site, they approached the state and asked if they could cut trees on the state, just to improve their visibility, and the state said yes again, so.
Yeah, I think they've changed their philosophy a little bit.
Yeah. And, 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 you know, the owner of Boomer Cloud is not, the, you know, would prefer to have better visibility. And this, I mean, basically, this is gonna be a, a, a natural berm, so you're not gonna see, you're gonna see some roofline. You're not gonna see this parking lot, for the most part, because there is a ten-foot cut slope right here. So, that's really gonna do, be, and then the, the turnpike is back down low on the other side, so. There is gonna be a berm.
Yeah.
And that slope is fairly steep, I wouldn't propose to really put any plantings on that, 'cause I don't think it'll be very viable. And, and we're, you know, personally, we're not interested in screening ourselves from the turnpike, we'd rather maintain some visibility. And we have several street trees along, you know, the local road, which I think is more appropriate.
Would you describe those street trees, I couldn't find them in the, I mean, I saw them on the plan, but I couldn't tell what they were.
If you, let me reference the, let me unroll the landscape plan, I can tell you.
Okay, I see now the, yeah.
So, if you bear with me while I just.
Yeah, I see they're on there.
Yeah, the, yeah.
You don't have to go through each one.
Okay, yeah, there's honey locusts, there are some red maples, we've got some pines in here, pines over here, and more honey locusts out in here, so these are all honey locusts, these are.
Yeah, I see that they're called out, I didn't, I missed it on the first go.
Okay.
That's okay.
Desiree, any questions?
Thanks for bringing colored plans, appreciate it. So, I was just gonna ask, so it is an existing business that?
Yeah, yeah, it's currently located on Amherst Street in Nashua. So, and I think they've just outgrown their location and are looking to expand. Extremely busy, it really is a, I guess there aren't a lot of, a lot of competition. And they, they say things around Christmas time, I think one of the reasons they haven't thought about signs is 'cause they just got through Christmas and, you know, everyone's doing car stereos and electronic starters and things like that for Christmas presents and they get booked months and months and months out, so.
So, they're actually relocating their existing business, I was, I, somehow I just assumed it was a second location, but.
No, they're relocating from Route 101A, Amherst Street. Access there is tough for them, because you have to kind of make your way around, and the space they're in is very tight for, for them, so they, they occupy a couple of different buildings and it's, it's kind of a madhouse. They're booked, like Earl said, they're booked three to four months out at a time, so.
Good, good for them.
They're really looking forward.
Merrimack's better than Nashua.
Yeah, they're really looking forward to getting places a little quieter, so that they can actually just concentrate on their work and make things happen. Nice, clean business, mobile electronics, do a lot of GPS work now with, with company vehicles and, and the starters and the, of course, the, the Boomer, Boomer McCloud stereos.
Neat.
I have, oh, good.
Go ahead, Nelson.
Sorry, I, I have to ask the question, what's the DB level inside there? Obviously, with a name like Boomer, you must have been asked more than once what your emissions, audible emissions are from such a site.
I think they stay in the building.
Yeah.
When they're doing the testing, but.
It's the customers you have to worry about when they're parked alongside.
Once they're out on the road.
Their car vibr- your car vibrates from the noise from the car alongside you.
Perhaps so, but you gotta give these guys credit, they picked the perfect site, even if they're gonna have a little bit of noise from their customers. Not gonna bother anybody.
I know, and it's gonna hear it.
We have not yet made a determination about completeness.
Mr. Chairman.
That's fine, you can make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that the application would be complete, that we should review as, it is complete and we should review it for acceptance.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
Second by Ms. Fault, any other discussion on completeness? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining, five zero zero for completeness. I know that the applicant has requested a waiver of the sidewalk provisions, which the applicant can speak to in a minute. And then we've got to do a public hearing at some point as well.
I was just gonna ask my question that I was gonna ask earlier. On your exterior elevation, your, your front, you've got these nice awnings, nice awnings on the side here. Not really for customer entrances, I'm guessing, these are more like employee entrances, your main entrance has no awning. I'd recommend an awning over there for that, might be a good place to put signage too, if you choose, like, right on this awning, but you've got no overhang over this front entryway.
The, the reason for the awnings on the side was because of the roof slope, the rain coming off of the, you see the, the direction of the, of the roof slope. So, that's why the awnings went on the side, the front being on the gable.
You're not concerned with it?
We're overly concerned with it, but if you, if we need to add that, then that would be, that would be.
I'm not sure it's, from our viewpoint, so much a matter of, you know, rain or snow, although I'm sure it'd be nice for that, but something to break up the long stretch of flat-faced building with some bit of definition, whether it's either the awning there or a little alcove for the entrance, or some shift in that flat, big, plain, Desiree, you know, the architect words for what I'm babbling about.
Right, we could, we could come up with something that's acceptable to staff, if you'd like.
That would work, yeah, that, in terms of an, 'cause typically, it's not long enough of a building for the, the major jog, at least. Or what's, what's the length of the building, 'cause I don't know how many plans.
Seventy-five feet, the, the footprint's fifty by seventy-five, basically.
Yeah, so it's much, much smaller. But yeah, if something were awning-wise, I, I know like having a vestibule on the front wall would be nice for winter, for the facility. It's gonna necessitate you guys changing around the site plan in order to make that work, 'cause I don't think you have the clearance on the front of the building to, to put it in with where the sidewalks are going, so, just, just a suggestion.
We could do a nice awning out there. Look good for you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Donna?
I was just gonna request if we could just add a slight change to the staff technical, technical comment number seven. I, to just use north, south, west, and east rather than front, rear, right, and left sides, just for clarification. It's usually what staff requests.
On seven I?
Seven I, HI, this is page four.
Yeah, top of page four.
Please indicate the dimensions of the proposed wall sign as shown on the building elevation sheet to ensure compliance with zoning ordinance requirements.
And if we could just add to that, to use north, south, it could be a separate letter, but I figured it would go along with that.
Under J?
Yeah, we can make it.
Do they have a plan with no north arrow or something?
Oh, on the elevations.
Oh, label these elevations with which face they are.
Just to clarify, just to be an easy fix.
So, on these, label these, north, south, east, and west, wherever they are.
Okay.
Rather than front, right side, left side, rear, I gotcha. Understood. Nelson?
I got one more, I, my Laura Merrimack River Local Advisory Committee again, I think, have they been notified of this or?
Are you within their jurisdiction here?
Well, that's a question also, I, I think so, but I'm not sure. A quarter mile of the Merrimack River, are you within a quarter mile of the?
No, not even close.
No?
No, no.
No, is it that far, does it matter? Yeah, okay.
I think that they probably are safe.
Then they don't have to if they're not, but if they are, well, they'd have to just ask for their comments.
Yeah, I can't tell you exactly how far, but we're definitely well over that.
A quarter mile to the river.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm surprised. Well.
If you look at the little vicinity plan, you've got a lot of land.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you gotta go.
You've got all this lot here, and then you've got the railroad.
I mean, the, the river, you've got the turnpike, then you've got DW highway, then you've got the river. So, you've got, we're probably a mile, we're probably, maybe two miles. I would guess.
There's a lot of housing there, Nelson, I mean.
Yeah. Okay.
Cross that out.
All right, just a question.
Other comments or questions before we either take up the waiver request or hear from nobody in a public hearing?
Why don't you head for public hearing?
All right, well, let's get that out of the way. Any member of the public or butters, citizens wish to weigh in and provide the board any information on this application before we consider final action? Seeing none? We'll go ahead and close that public hearing. Please speak to your sidewalk waiver request, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We are requesting a waiver from the Site Plan, Site Plan Regulation Section 7.05D19, which requires construction of paved pedestrian way or sidewalk for commercial and industrial properties. Currently, the only, and I actually initially thought there wasn't any sidewalk. I double-checked, 'cause of the time of year, I double-checked on Google Earth. And there actually, the only sidewalk that's on Executive Park Drive is a small section up in front of the theater, down near the cul-de-sac, so well away from, it really, it's closer to the kind of overflow parking, it's down in that area at the end of the cul-de-sac, which is about five hundred plus feet up the road. The only other sidewalk, the nearest sidewalk in the other direction is all the way out at Amherst Road, about a thousand feet away. There's no other sidewalk along here, our request is kind of a, a practical request, that it's gonna be an isolated sidewalk and there's no plans, that I'm aware of, for the town to build any sidewalks out here. Matter of fact, I know in conversations with Kyle Fox, that they would, if, I guess, if they come up with the funding, they would actually like to narrow Executive Park Drive, because the initial, the original boulevard concept that was designed just really hasn't come to fruition, you know, it's, and a smaller road is, is really what they would like, but that's something in the future.
I believe to help you, I think, in fact, that was in the, uh, Capital Improvement Program, was when the Public Works put their section, the CIP, to this board, they did actually mention they want to narrow Executive Drive.
Yep, that's what was mentioned to me, and I don't know the timing of it, but.
It'll all depend on the funding.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, so, i- i- there's a, there's an idea out there to do it, but when that happens, and if it happens, is still, I guess, up in the air. But, so, I guess our request is, is from a practical point of view, we think that building a sidewalk that is just likely not to connect to anything on either side of it is kind of a, a waste of resources. It would be a public sidewalk if built, and I think it's problematic for, for the town to maintain sidewalk when it's not part of a, a larger system, so. It's, so, from a practical point of view, we're requesting that it not be required to, to build sidewalk.
Thank you for the presentation, Donna, in their letter, they indicate that this regulations require sidewalks along Artiro and Collector Streets, as well as residential streets, and they make the argument in their letter that they are none of those things, does the staff agree with that analysis?
Well, although actually, that's, I think that's the old letter.
Yes, the old letter.
That's the old letter.
The old letter doesn't, new letters and say then.
Right, oh, I chan- that, that was basically prompt, you know, prompting from staff. Because I, I cited in my original letter, I cited a different section in the regulations.
The third one.
And they, after reviewing it, they directed me to this section.
I see.
And so, those arguments, while they're stated in the other section, they aren't stated in this section, so. I changed up my argument a little bit. It's still the same, it's still the same discussion, but.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we grant a waiver on, for this particular project on the basis that the specific circumstances relative to the site plan and the conditions of the land indicate that the waiver will probably ca- properly carry out the spirit and intent of the regulations.
Is there a second for that motion? Second by Ms. Fault, any discussion? Desiree?
I should, think I should make a comment to the effect of a sidewalk in Merrimack being potentially waived. So, this, the sidewalk in this area, if we were to connect it continuously up through there, would get you up from cinema, well, the cinema down back to, in a master plan, I'm the chair on the master plan sidewalk committee, so. In the whole scheme of things, it would get you up to the theater from Shaw's, which would be kind of an artery there. I don't know if it's, it's up close enough to residential. I don't know if it's, it's close enough to residential, but it seems like it would be a nice connection to have in the master planned years of it. That said, the road is wide, as it is, it stands to reason that when they reconfigure the road, you can pull the sidewalks in all at one time and not have them piecemeal, as it will be when this is built, if we make them build it right now. So, on that note, I, I'm against putting it on in this case, but pending the full sidewalk master plan, then wait in there.
I, I agree with, I, I think, elements of what you're talking about in terms of, if you are talking about places to walk, a theater might be a place that people would wanna walk between a theater and a restaurant or something like that. These are not built close together and compact the way you would when you would normally try to encourage people to choose it for a place to walk, and both of the places that you'd be walking between have these enormous parking lots that they've built, which sort of would facilitate getting there by car. But if they were narrowing Executive Park Drive and they were able to, as a part of that, affordably maintain some sidewalk along the whole way, I mean, that's something to support. In terms of the overall sidewalk master plan committee and the work that that group is doing, and I know it's not done yet, but at least I think we've got a sense of things, if we were coming up with a prioritization mechanism for where we would put sidewalks, this wouldn't even make the fifth page. I mean, it's just not gonna be the place that you would say is the most important sidewalk to have in town. And with that, I don't have any problem supporting the waiver request.
To, to comment just briefly on that, the Merrimack site. You know, my boss has high hopes of that site becoming a mixed-use development with.
The Merrimack Hotel?
Yes, the whole site, but that's, it still doesn't look like that's gonna be the case. It still looks like it'll be a hotel. But if it were a mixed use, then that would trigger a good use, 'cause you'd have a dense use there and a connection back up to the theater. That said, does sidewalks need to exist on both sides of the street? Probably not, it's probably excessive, but it's a high-traffic street, so I intend, I, I tend to agree with you, if it being a fifth-page master plan item. But, you know, if a major development were to come out of it, then it would make sense.
Sure, I think if we're looking at proposal, we develop the old Merrimack Hotel or Radisson or what are the other five names it's had?
Hilton.
Yeah.
Um.
It roots off of Hilton.
It's been the Hilton.
That, then we would require them to put a sidewalk in, Mr. Chairman.
If anybody's interested in historic trivia, there is an importance to that hotel in that when Bill Clinton ran for president and he gave his comeback kid speech that relaunched his campaign, it was in that hotel. And that's, after losing New Hampshire and Iowa, went on to turn it around, starting right there. Not that it matters to the puzzle.
The fact that the hotel is now falling down.
People didn't love it that much. Anyway, is there any more comments on the application and the motion for waiving the sidewalk?
I will vote for this motion based on the persuasive arguments presented by yourself and Ms. Fault.
With that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Five, zero, zero to grant the sidewalk waiver. Is there any other discussion with respect to the application in chief?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we grant final approval subject to all the conditions that have been recommended by Ms. Har, Ms. Harris. Gillian did, did the work.
Oh.
Pages two, three, and four. Plus, and, plus you wanted item J to reflect, I forget what you wanted.
North, south, east, and west.
Yes, okay.
On the elevations.
Okay, but otherwise, I vote that we grant final acceptance.
Is there a second for that motion? Second by Ms. Fault, did we add anything else to it that we needed for conditions or approval?
Just the G, item J.
Yeah, the one that Donna had.
Awning?
The awning.
Will the awning be considered an actual item on there, or?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, I think that it should be.
Having an entry awning, or something that, you know, that you guys can settle, but some kind of.
Did, did we resolve anything about signage, or should we put a statement in here that they need to meet the Merrimack code?
I think so.
So that they don't automatically make it twice aside like the Cinematic did.
Sure, well, we can put in some condition, require a, a condition that they meet the code is a little redundant, 'cause they've already gotta beat the code unless they get a waiver from the zoning.
Well, it does say aye, that they're ensuring compliance with the zoning ordinance requirements.
Aye says aye, okay.
Yeah.
So that was in there.
Yeah, I think we don't need to put it in special. It's a requirement, yeah, unless you find another area.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Five, zero, zero to grant final approval.
Regulate the owner on making a wise decision.
Yep, welcome to Merrimack.
Thank you very much for your time.
Appreciate it.
Welcome, welcome them to town, I guess you guys have already been here.
Excellent.
Item number five on our agenda is discussion, possible action regarding other items of concern, and you may see on the agenda that a voluntary lot merger is listed there for, which has been signed. Are there any other discussion or possible action regarding other items of concern? I can't recall any that were on my mind. With that, we'll move on to item number six on our agenda, which is approval of the minutes of January twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, and perhaps that means twenty fifteen. What's the will of the board with respect to the minutes from January twentieth of this year?
Mr. Chairman, I move to make a motion to approve the minutes as written from January twentieth, two thousand and fifteen.
It's a motion to approve them as written, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
No, I couldn't find any corrections.
I think I read them and found no corrections.
Any other comments? All in favor of approving the minutes of January twentieth as written, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? Five, zero, zero for that. And that concludes the substantive items on our agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman. My privilege, Tom, I always get it.
I think he did beat ya.
He did, actually, I will, I will bow, I will bow to the council.
Let's call that a motion by Counsel Koenig, seconded by Mr. Milnes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? We are adjourned, don't forget to turn your microphones off, and thank you.